Okay, tonight on our agenda, we do have a public hearing on a couple of proposed ordinance changes that we're looking to adopt, and this is the first of two public hearings. So there won't be any action taken on these tonight. Due to our procedures in county government, we do advertise this in the paper, we make it available on social media and on our website, and give time for people to review it, think about it, ask any questions, make public comments, or comments to the commissioner's office in writing or by phone. But I'm going to read this first one here, and then I'll give you a little bit of background on it, and then we'll allow anyone that would like to come up and speak in regard to this proposal, that you would have an opportunity to come up to the podium and speak on this. Okay, ordinance number 0-02-20, an ordinance amending Title 27, Article 5, Chapter 30 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding the International Property Maintenance Code, repealing of any and all conflicting ordinances and parts of the ordinance provided for severability and provide for other purposes. Whereas Walker County, Georgia desires to amend the ordinance regarding the governing of the conditions and maintenance of all property, building, and structures by providing the standards for supplied utilities and facilities and other physical things and conditions essential to ensure the structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupancy and the use, and the demolition of such existing structures in the unincorporated area of Walker County, Georgia, providing that the insurance of the permit as permitted in collections of fees therefore repeal all other ordinances apart of the ordinance in conflict therewith. Therefore be it hereby ordinance by the Walker County State Commissioner that the Code of Ordinance of Georgia is amended as follow. So Section 302-8 of the International Property Maintenance Code adopted by Walker County is deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. So this first section that's actually struck through is what's in the ordinance today. This is what's on the books today, so I'm going to read it first. Section 302-8, motor vehicles. Motor vehicles except as provided for in other regulations, no more than two inoperable or unlicensed motor vehicles shall be parked, kept, or stored outside of any premises, and no vehicle shall at any time be in the state of major disrepair or disassembly, disrepair, or in the process of being stripped or dismantled. Painting of vehicle is prohibited unless conditioned inside an approved spray booth. Exceptions, a vehicle of any type is permitted to undergo major overhaul including bodyworks provided that such work is performed inside a structure or similar enclosure area designed and approved for such purpose. So this is the language that would be replaced for that language. Motor vehicles except as provided for in other regulations, no more than two inoperable or unlicensed motor vehicles shall be parked, kept, or stored outside of any premises. Such vehicles must be covered with a tarp or vehicle covering and parked behind buildings, home, or other structures obstructing the view of the front row. All vehicles of any type are permitted to undergo major overhaul including mechanical and bodywork provided that such work is performed inside a structure such as a garage or simply enclosed area designed and approved for such purpose. Painting of a vehicle is prohibited unless inside an approved spray booth. So in essence, what this is doing is saying that you can still have two inoperable vehicles that you don't have licensed or insured on your property. This ordinance is just guiding to say those vehicles need to be covered with a tarp or car cover or some type of something to cover those up, and that you park those behind your structure or just out of the view of the front road. Because we're having people that's having concern that if you've got vehicles in your front yard that's dismantled on blocks, jacks, whatever something, maybe it's a hobby car, project car, that it's affecting the values of other people's homes. And so we're not saying you can't do it, we're just putting some guidelines in that say that you would just take those existing vehicles that you have, move them to the back, and just cover them with some type of tarp or cover that would be satisfactory to protect those vehicles. So probably what we ought to do, there's a second part to this that talks about disposal of garbage, so we don't get confused. Is there anyone that would like to make any comments, suggestions, input toward this change of this wording that we're looking to do? Is anyone that'd like to speak, or anyone has questions, or any public comment at all? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Hi.
If you'll state your name for the record.
My name is Donna Smith, and I live in Rossville. So when you say they move it behind the house so it's not seen from the main road, what if the property, like I have some people, their property goes a long ways, and my house sits here, so they have not only broken down vehicles, they have a lot of garbage and broken down like those buildings that you'd put stuff in, but they live in them, and that brings down my property. So what about that?
Yeah, this, there's a little bit of a compromise here, that somebody maybe lives on a corner lot at an intersection, you know, we're asking that basically from the front-facing view of the house, so even if they do put it behind their house, or garage, or shed or something, it may still be able to be seen from a side road, and that's a little bit of the give and take of the compromise that we're looking from the front-facing of the road. Because if someone lives on a corner, you know, they really can't help that if their backyard is exposed to the side. But right now, the way the ordinance is, somebody could have two vehicles literally sitting in their front yard completely uncovered, so this would be giving guidance to move them to the back and to cover them.
Okay, so in this instance, it's a long property, it's not a corner property, and they have them in the front as well, broken down vans, a camper that was broken down. They've since moved that behind and put a tarp over it, and somebody's living in it too. So we have some abandoned buildings kind of look like that they're living out of, and their garbage is just piling up in front of the buildings, plus other vehicles that they just come in all hours of the night and park them.
Yeah, I'd like for you to maybe report that to code enforcement and give them the address, because not even what's supposed to be living in a camper or storage building, that's already in the existing ordinances. This is not a perfect ordinance, this is basically trying to find middle ground, find a compromise for everybody, something that's agreeable. There's been a lot of discussion about this for the last year or so, and this seems to be, seems to be agreeable. You know, sometimes when you have these things, if no one's 100% happy, but everybody can kind of give and take and kind of come to that compromise, then it still gives people the ability, you know, the freedom to have project vehicles or hobby cars. Sometimes people, somebody, they may have a wreck in a car, and they didn't have full coverage, and they're saving up to fix the car, and there's just a lot of extenuating circumstances. But this would limit to two. Anything over that in our ordinance is classified as a salvage or junkyard, and there's other requirements that would restrict that, especially in residential setting, residential zone. So this would require people to get down to two.
Okay, so once it's reported, and they are asked to clean it up, what is the steps after that?
Typically, code enforcement, they will come out and just write a warning citation, so there's a record, there's a document out of it. And in most all cases, unless there's just some extenuating safety circumstance, they will give them 30 days to come into compliance. If someone's got a lot to clean up, we do give our code officers discretion to make judgment on site, or whether it's been bad, or there's medical, or you know, it's just extenuating circumstances. It's not our goal to find people, it's really just to get in compliance. If someone refuses, then that would escalate that up, and then they could be facing a fine, and also court appearance in front of magistrate judge, which who has additional authority to help maybe motivate someone to come into compliance.
Okay, alright.
But there is a process, and then it does give someone due process, you know, in a court setting.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, thank you. Yes, sir, come up, please.
Well, a question I got on that is, it's like, we've got a farm around 200 acres. We've got a couple trucks, one that's got tools all in it, it ain't never out on the road. We use it to run back and forth on the farm to work on stuff. We have another truck that we have a fuel tank on. It ain't tagged or insured, they don't go out on the road.
Yeah, this really doesn't really comply to the farming environment, farming aspect for someone that has tractors that they're using for parking different things. This is more or less motor vehicles.
Okay, that's what was concerning to me.
Yeah, it's not going to adversely affect the ag or farming.
The ag farm, alright.
Good question. Anyone else? Okay, yes, sir, hold on.
Randy Pittman. My question is, you, the ordinance says park it behind your home out of view of the main road. My property, I'm in a curve, in a hairpin curve, and we've removed all the trees on our property. So you can see the back of my home nearly as well as you can see the front of my home coming off the other road too. So what does somebody do about that?
As long as it's in the back, you was being compliant, and as long as you had the cover, and as long as there's no more than two, then you would be good.
And here it says about working on it in a structure or garage. Say somebody's got a paved driveway, you know, if they're keeping it covered, why they're not working on it? Why couldn't they work on it out in front of their home, just like you would say, change your brakes in front of your home on your operative vehicle?
You know, I think what we're trying to really get at is stuff that's extended. You know, if somebody's doing something on a Saturday afternoon, you know, it's probably not going to cause any conflict, or hard feelings, or property devaluation, or anything like that. If they've got something going for an afternoon, or day or something, but if you start getting into multiple days and it sits there.
Leaving out for weeks at a time.
With some jacks and blocks and things like that, then that's when codes would probably start getting complaints.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to the second part of this, it's actually on the second page. Part number two, Section 308-2 of the International Property Maintenance Code adopted by Walker County is deleted in its entirety and placed with the following. This deals with disposal of rubbish. Currently, it says, every occupant of a structure shall dispose of all rubbish in a clean and sanitary manner by placing such rubbish in an approved container. The wording that we're looking to go with, we'd be deleting that in its entirety and inserting these, this statement. Every occupant of a structure shall dispose of all rubbish in a clean and sanitary manner by placing such rubbish in a plastic or galvanized trash container with a lid until removal from the structure and disposed of of all rubbish storage, excuse me, disposed of at a rubbish storage facility or garbage facility. What this is basically saying is, you need to have a container with a lid to keep the critters out. We're having some issues with roadside litter, and some of that's created if people take just their trash bags and they send them out on the side of the road the night before for their garbage service, and the raccoons or the dogs or whatever get into it, and they stroll it out everywhere, and a lot of times these garbage services don't clean that up, or the stuff gets blown around. And so really, the change is here is to have it in a container that keeps the animals out of it. Sometimes we have situations where people will take bags of garbage and just throw it in the back of the pickup truck and let it mound up, and maybe they only go to the landfill once a month or something. And the problem with that is, is the animals are getting into it and scattering this stuff around. So really, this is just to try to clean up our community more, keep our community clean, and just, you know, basically good sanitation practices. But the way this was worded, our code enforcement, if somebody saw, you know, their green garbage bags out on the side of the road, you know, there was really not a clear explanation of that, and so that's really why the wording was added, that it needs to be in a plastic or galvanized container with a lid. And so that's really all we're trying to accomplish here. Any questions, comments, concerns, input? Yes, sir, come up, please.
Hello, my name's Sean Lawler. You know, talking about this, you know, like you just made that point about making, you know, the, with the abundance of trash and stuff like that, is there any way that, you know, like a lot of the bigger cities, or Chattanooga for instance, they practice recycling. Is there any way we could bring something to that to Walker County? Because I know we recycle, and that takes a lot of the trash away down tremendously. If there's something we could just, you know, discuss, you know, that kind of type of thing?
We do, that's a great point. We do have recycling bins at the landfill where people can bring the recycled materials, and a lot of people do, and we're very grateful for that, to keep that out of our landfills. I know some of the cities where there's a higher density of population offers recycling service, and sometimes it's through a third party. Trying to undertake that on a countywide basis, as many miles of roads that we have would be quite, quite an undertaking. There's also been people ask, but why does the county just not get into the curbside pickup of municipal solid waste? And my personal feelings of that being is, I don't want to compete with small business. You know, we've got some really good trash providers in our community that are second and third generation, families that have done that, and they do a great job, and that's their livelihood, and I don't think personally the county government should start competing with those small businesses and take over that operation.
So another part to that question, it would be, why is it only acceptable to have in incorporated areas like Lafayette and Rossville, but, you know, bringing it out towards the unincorporated area, things like that?
Each city has their own governing authority, being their city council, so like, as one example was, when I was on the city council in Chickamauga, we actually put recycling in place, but it's an extra charge to use a third-party provider, and you have a separate green can, and so you pay your normal garbage fee, and then if you want to recycle, then you pay another fee on top of that. So you really pay more to recycle, it's just being conscientious of the environment. But as rural as we are and as spread out as we are, I don't know if there's a third-party provider that would.
Take that.
Would take that massive thing on, we're a more dense population. I mean, you never say never, it could change, and I would definitely be interested if there are companies out there that, you know, wanted to have that conversation. But the cities actually set those up, their local city councils.
Right, okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on this, fair conversation? Anything else? Okay, we're going to move to the, to the second one. It's a little bit longer, I'm not going to read the entire thing, I'm just going to read a couple of things in here. I'll start out and read this first part here. It says, ordinance number 0-03-20, an ordinance adding Article 6 to Chapter 14 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding the Walker County Business Code establishing a special event permit. Whereas special event permits are in place across the state of Georgia and the United States, and there is an existence of county neighboring, counties neighboring Walker County, a permitting system for special events, and whereas consistent practice with communities of similar size lessens confusion of an event, planners, and entrepreneurs, whereas information about existence of special events occur in the unincorporated Walker County is necessary to safeguard, and this is really the key here, to safeguard public health and public safety by providing for effective emergency preparedness and response. Therefore hereby be ordinance by the Walker County State Commissioner that the Code of Ordinance is amended as follow. I want to read down here what a special event is, what being defined. A special event, the term special event or event shall mean any organized activity having its purpose, entertainment or recreation such as a festival, celebration, footrace, bicycle race, vehicle race, horse race, barrel race, rodeo, concert, parade, or march, film or television production, tour, rally, or assembly which takes place on the public streets, sidewalks, right-ofways, or occurs on private property, and impacts government services on public right-ofways, or may impact the health, safety, or welfare of public generally becoming of the nature that assemble on the, the assembly or the size of the assembly. The term special event or events does not include organized activity having its purpose, entertainment, recreation, or education which occurs on county or school board property or is, or in the county's public use buildings. So this is something that we've been working with Sheriff Wilson on, that he has, he has asked us to take this up, and what we run into from time to time is you may have events that want to take place that are very positive, or things that people want to do, and they approach the county and they say, we want to close off these three roads, or we want to partially close a road, or we want to have a 5K race and raise money for an organization, or any type of fundraiser event, or they want to have a bicycle race. And they come to the county and they go, what do I need to do? I mean, they come asking, what do I need to do? Because if you have these similar things inside the cities in our county, they have a process, and they have a permit that you go and apply for, and the main purpose of that is for the health and safety. We've got an existing situation right now that I'd even learned about till two days ago, where you have a outdoor, two-day concert event that's coming to Cherokee Farms that is called.
Valley Vibes.
Valley Vibes. And it's on private property, but I think they're anticipating like over 700 people. They're going to have large fires. People are going to be camping overnight. They're going to have public showers, based off their website, both indoor and outdoor. And so when you have a situation like that, where they're going to have food vendors, alcohol vendors, and this thing's going to go for a couple of days, and I think they're having 20-plus different bands come and perform, and so they have the right to do that, but where it comes up is, is that we want to make sure they have the proper safety things put in place. And so if someone comes up and requests a permit, number one, it reads in this ordinance, and we put the language in here so we don't have to go back and ever change it, but we're not going to be charging for the permit process or the application for anyone that's a local business, resident, organization, or anybody that's based in Walker County. The only ones that would ever have to charge for a permit under the price sheet that we would put out would be out-of-town promoters that are wanting to come in. Another example of this would be like an Ironman event, where they come in and use a lot of, a lot of resources, and partially block roads, intersections, and so forth. So like this thing coming in the next couple of weeks or so, you know, it's basically an event in the woods. And so, you know, there needs to be consideration made for incoming traffic from a public safety standpoint. Do they have enough parking on campus? Are they going to be trying to park out on the county road and be partially blocking roads? Part of having a permit process would give proper notification to the health department for the food vendors, to make sure the food vendors are in compliance, so we don't get a bunch of people get sick for food not being handled properly. Public safety as far as, you know, something as much as someone wants to do, you know, fireworks event, here they're going to be having large bonfires, you know, do we need to have a fire truck on site? Do they have proper security for these events? And so it all gets down to public safety. So if someone's having an event at your house, and you're not charging anything, and you're not having outside food vendors, and you're just having a birthday party or celebration or something, you're fine. But when you start, as it starts in here talking about public access, right-ofway, safety, public health, that's what this is really going for. Also, you could have groups or organization, you're seeing more on TV, that want to come in and have a organized march, event, protest, these type of things. And so this would give public safety notification that there's groups that wanting to organize and maybe protest or demonstrate. And so they would be allowed to do that if they followed the process. So this, like I said, you know, it excludes school events, so this is not, you know, applying to football games and stuff like that, or anything that's on the school property or county property, because we know those are already going to be regulated by county government, school government, those things. But we often, I say often, we've had a few occasions where movie production companies will come in, and they'll say, hey, we want to shoot a movie. I mean, they shot one just within the last two years in Walker County. And they say, you know, this is exciting, we want to use local people as extras, and we're going to be bringing revenue and accommodations to rent houses and things. What do you want us to do? And then we just go, well, we don't really have a process for that. And so this was, this is really what that's geared to do, is to get us up to the 21st century with what other cities and counties do. This is not trying to prevent anyone's or prohibit anyone's freedoms, or to intrude or invade on people's property, or to tell people what they can and cannot do. This is to make sure everyone's safe, and that we don't have an event where there's large fire, bonfires, or fireworks, or, and half the side of the mountain or the ridge catches on fire, and we were not prepared or didn't know, and we have hundreds of people in the woods. So this all goes back to public safety. I know there's been some questions about, is this something to create more fees? It's not, because the, we didn't write any fees in here, but it is in the ordinance, because anytime you change an ordinance, you had to have advertisement, you had to have two public hearings. There will be a separate rate sheet that can be changed just by, the board through a resolution can set a rate, change a rate, eliminate a rate. But to start off with this, under this administration, there's not going to be any charge for these permits. If the new board comes in and decides they want to reconsider, then they're not going to have to go through the whole process of the ordinance. They would just have a resolution, have it on the agenda, and the board would decide what they wanted to do. So any questions, comments, concerns on this? Yeah, Mr. Todd, come on up.
My name's Todd Knobblin, I'm a county resident. I'm thankful that we had the opportunity, when we see things like this, to be able to come and to have open discussion. Having read through it, there's a lot of vagueness in some of the things that concern me. When we talk about private property and health, safety, or welfare, who's to determine that? If somebody doesn't like me, and I decide to have 30 people on my property, and that's a health problem because of COVID, who's to, who's makes that determination? There's several things in here, the rodeo in Kensington, those folks have been doing that for years. Under this, the assumption is they're not going to have to apply for a permit and go through some hoops to be able to have the rodeo in Kensington. This coming Saturday, we're going to have a Republican Party-led parade through Walker County. Under this, it appears that we would need to have had a permit to be able to do that. I prefer freedom and choice over government rescuing me. I get that we don't want to have a Bonnaroo in Walker, or at least, I'm speaking for myself, I don't want a Bonnaroo-type crowd in Walker County, Georgia. I understand those kinds of things. However, with some of the wording of this and the way it's there, I would ask that you table it until the commission, the five-man commission comes aboard in January, and let's revisit and have some more input. I appreciate you letting me speak.
Sure, absolutely. You know, and this, again, is not to prohibit anybody from doing anything, I know you using an example of a Bonnaroo. Technically, if they met the requirements, somebody could do that. You know, it's their freedom to be able to do that, it's just, we want to make sure the public safety's there. As far as the rodeo, it's not to try to infringe or negatively impact the rodeo. As far as the rodeo, it's not to try to infringe or negatively impact the rodeo. I think the rodeos are great, but it's to make sure, especially events, give an example, let's say that somebody wanted to have a bicycle race or a 5K race or something, and they come up and say, hey, we're going to have 1,500 people, and by the way, we're going to do it on July 4th at high noon. Well, how many ambulances do we need to have you to have lined up? Because you're going to have a race at high noon on 4th of July with 90% humidity, and it's predicted to be 80 or 97 degrees that day. So we want to make sure you've thought out your plan, and we're there to be a partner with you to help you be successful in your event, instead of us finding out after the fact that we've got 1,500 people doing a race and we just had seven people hit the ground. So that's what we're trying to do. It's more of about communication and collaborating. It's not about trying to pick and choose who does what type of events, because, you know, in our country, people have the right to protest, people have the right to to disagree with their local government, and this would give them the rights to do that as long as they gave proper notification and, again, if they're local citizens. Also, I wanted to read too.
Well, before you go on, I'll just, real quick, I would rather have the responsibility and the ownership of it on the citizens instead of the what-ifs of what could happen. Let's be responsible citizens, make responsible decisions, and if somebody doesn't make a responsible decision, there's recourse in our legal system. So if I have a, if I have a race and people are hurt because of my irresponsibility, then there's a lawsuit against me and there's recourse. When we have legislation, then it restricts our freedoms. So again, it's just my opinion, I appreciate you letting me speak tonight.
Comments, we'll take it. I reached out to Dade County and asked them what they do, because they're also a very rural county, and and there's, as one example, they don't have zoning in Dade County. And so I talked to Ted Rowley, the chairman over there, and he said, well, we didn't used to have a process, and then after we had one death, and another event, a person got paralyzed, and the event sponsor of these events that were on the county roads had no insurance. And so that's another thing that's that's in this. If someone's going to have an event on county property, county right of ways, county streets, based off of the type of event, size of event, there would be a liability insurance requirement. So if someone did get injured, hurt, or killed, then they would be coverage for that event. Where Dade County got in a situation where they gave the nod for the event, didn't have the proper proper documentation and insurance, and they had a person lose their life, and they have a second person that's paralyzed from the waist down. And so they did this on a reactive basis after two great tragedies. We're just trying to do this on the front end before some tragedy does happen. I do want to call your attention to the third to the last page of this packet, section 14-16, there are some exclusions that I want to make sure everyone understands. Says, if held on their property, this article shall not apply to meetings or events of church or religious groups, civic clubs, organizations, or nonprofit corporations which hold a 501(c)(3) status. One reason for that is most of those organization organizations by default are going to have insurance. Most of those organizations are already very conscientious about liability, and and most of those, if they have a big event, they're going to reach out and be proactive anyway. And it also is trying to keep from, you know, infringing or or trying to put regulations on church or religious events. A, individuals or community yard sales are exempt from a permit if they do not exceed four days, so that way the 27-yard sale would be cleared. I know this sounds a little cheesy or or sounds flippant, it's not. Some of our research, this is very real. Children's lemonade stands, things of that nature are exempt from this permit. There has been other communities where local government has come up and said, you know, you got to have this for your kids' lemonade stand. That's that's not what it is. I mean, you're going to have, what, five or six people at a lemonade stand at one time? So it's just things of that nature. Private parties hosted by an individual are exempt from the permit, provided that no monies are exchanged. So the question, if you're going to have 30, 40, 50, 100 people, and you can get them all on your property, if you've got a farm and you're hosting a birthday party or celebration, as long as you're not charging an entrance fee to make it, or if it's not a public event, then you would be exempt. County-sponsored events are also exempt, and also, we stated earlier, if it's a, an event on county property or school property, would be exempt. So a lot of the events, if you stop and think about it, that most people currently have are either a nonprofit organization on their own property, a church event, or they're they're utilizing a government facility. So there's, when you really boil it down, there's not a lot of things that this would hit, but definitely, as it mentioned in what is these special events, it's a lot of things that can be held in the in the road or the right of way. Anyone else? Give everyone an opportunity. Okay, and again, at our our next meeting, we'll we'll continue to take public comment on this as well, two weeks from today. Okay, that ends our special hearing on that. It is 6:38, we're still on October the 8th, 2020, so we're going to enter into our regular scheduled business time. We do have our minutes from some of our past meetings that we want to enter into the record, so we do have the minutes from our special, excuse me, our scheduled public hearing on September 24th, 2020. So you have those minutes provided in the packet. Also, there's a different additional packets out front there at the table, and it's also on our website. Does anyone have any concerns, issues, or see any errors in those minutes? Hearing none, we'll sign those into the record. We have the minutes of a, another meeting that we had on the 24th. Got those minutes, any issues or questions or discrepancies on those? Hearing none, we'll sign that into the record. Then we did have a scheduled public hearing also on the 24th, it's in our packet. Any issues or questions or corrections on that one? I know it gets kind of confusing when we have multiple sessions in one day. Okay, then we did have a special call meeting on September the 30th to approve our operating budget for FY '21, and we did have a couple of purchase orders that we took up at that meeting. So that was held at the commissioner's office at noon to approve our budget. Any questions on that? Okay, we'll sign that into the record. Now we're going to get into the good stuff. Anytime we can get money, this is good. So this here is a Resolution R.028-20, a resolution of the SOU Commissioner of Walker County to support the submission of the pre-application for a land and water conservation fund grant to benefit the citizens of Walker County, whereas the Congress has established a federal land and water conservation fund, which is acronym LWCF, implemented, I guess I forgot to put my glasses on. Conservably irreplaceable land and improve outdoor recreation opportunities throughout the nation, whereas Walker County owns and operates an unnamed recreation park on the grounds of the Walker County Civic Center campus, and desires to make improvements so that children of all abilities could utilize this community asset, and whereas Walker County will submit a pre-application for the LWCF grant during the current grant cycle to assist with renovations to the current playground at this location, and whereas Walker County further agrees that this, that in the event the county's pre-application is recommended for funding by the Department of Natural Resources, Walker County certifies, ensures that it has the ability and the intentions to finance 50% of the total project cost using voter-approved SPOLOX funding, and whereas Walker County agrees to move forward with the due diligence and prepare or have prepared appropriate documentation required for a formal LWCF application, therefore, be it resolved by the SOU Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia authorizes up to $200,000 from the 2020 SPOLOX as a matching grant if it is awarded of the LWCF for improvements to the unnamed park on the Walker County Civic Center campus, so resolved and adopted the 8th day of October. What this is in our SPOLOX, one of our projects that we have slated over our six-year SPOLOX cycle, is to put a all-inclusive playground at the Civic Center. Years ago, there was a playground that was put in place that was considered a handicap-accessible playground. Well, technology has come so far over the last couple of decades when it comes to engineering and designing playgrounds, they don't, they don't classify them as handicap-accessible. They now classify and take it to the next level as all-inclusive. So people of all abilities can play and have fun in a safe play environment. These playground designs are really neat, but they're really, really expensive. So what we were trying to do here is to take our $200,000 that we have in our SPOLOX and double our money with a grant, and get another 200,000, and put that money together to build this playground. And so, as you can see, they're expensive. And so part of the process of the grant is, it has to go before the governing body in a commissioner's meeting to have a resolution that is saying that if we are awarded this grant, that the governing body has allocated and is agreeable to that 50/50 match. And so this will be part of the documentation that goes with the application. These things are very competitive. We may not get it this first time, but we're going to keep applying every year and see if we can get this funding so we can, we can double our opportunity of what we can accomplish and provide for our children of this community. So is there any questions on this? You're going to see, we're going to start getting more aggressive and going after more grant opportunities to try to get more money. John Logan up here in the blue shirt, come on our staff about three weeks ago now, and his job is to be our director over grants and our public transportation. Also, we're expanding our transit system to seven days a week to provide additional transportation for people trying to get to work and to partner with some of our industries that are are needing additional help, and also people that don't have reliable transportation that want to go to events on the weekend. If there's car shows and different things going on, or they want to go to church, or anything like that, our transit's not run on Saturdays and Sundays. So a lot of our people that really want to be able to get out are not able to. And so John's been charged with that expansion, and he's working on that, and that's in our 2021 budget, and we're working to try to staff up, to get those additional staff members to to get up to seven days a week, and also expanded hours. So we'll sign this into the record. And then all resolutions are attested by our clerk. Okay, our next item here, we worked in collaboration with our school system and also with Senator Mullis, and this is a letter that I received back on September 23rd of 2020 to the commissioner's office. This is a One Georgia Special Purpose Award. Says, congratulations on the selection of your project. As a recipient of a One Georgia Special Purpose Award, these funds in the amount of $75,000 are budgeted to assist with the construction of a partially enclosed pavilion for the Walker County Board of Education Saddle Ridge School Rock Springs Outdoor Learning Lab. And so, again, the, this award grant is to the county government, but is to construct an outdoor learning lab at the Saddle Ridge School System. And tonight, we have Vets Berry, and you'll have to introduce your partner.
So I'm Vets Berry, and I'm the ag ed teacher at Saddle Ridge, and this is my principal, Wendy Ingram. And Commissioner, we feel, I almost called you Commissioner Shannon. So I taught him in kindergarten a few years ago. But we are thrilled that the county has agreed to accept this grant, and it is for an outdoor learning lab, partially enclosed, so that the students at Saddle Ridge can actually get in the outdoors and do some learning. So on Saddle Ridge campus, we have wonderful areas of environmental land. We've got woods, we've got a pond ecosystem, we have wetland areas, we have stormwater, runoff retention areas that the students can learn about, and so we wanted the outdoor learning lab for our students to actually do some real-life, hands-on learning in the outdoors. And part of what we, I say push, but part of what we do at Saddle Ridge is try to teach our students to be respectful and responsible. And so we feel like this will give them the opportunity to learn to respect the environment and then realize that they are responsible for taking care of our earth. So we appreciate your acceptance of this, and we thank Senator Mullis for initiating this, and we just see wonderful things coming.
Thank you so much. Yes, John, yeah, absolutely.
And we just appreciate it for sure, because our students are really involved out there, and it's thanks to innovative teachers like Ms. Berry, and we have several others that really just take pride in our county. Some of our kids never get that experience outside of being in their home, playing a video game. Our kids are outdoors, they're learning, they're figuring out how to exist in nature, and it's thanks to grants like this. So we're excited, and we want to invite everybody out when we get it ready.
Absolutely, we need to have a big ribbon cut.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
John Logan will be working in concert with them. This is truly a local partnership where he will be working to make sure that we dot all the i's and cross all the t's, and that we get all of the funding and and from a compliance standpoint. So the school system will be implementing the project and construction, and and we'll partner with them and help them out any way we can, if if some of our skills and people are needed, be happy to do that. But John's role in this will mainly be to to make sure we're meeting all the guidelines. This particular packet here just has mainly the documents, but you'll see the 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 project checklist and things that you've got to go through, and this is more or less of the acceptance of this, but there's about four times as many pages of the the how-tos and the do-nots. So you really got to have someone that's a, has a high attention to detail to make sure, because you miss one little thing and you can jeopardize the entire grant. So I know John will do a great job, and we're excited to to be able to partner with the schools and give a better learning experience for our children. Any questions on this? Okay. So bear with me here, I've got several pages here I've got to sign in public, because we have to be able to show this was done in a public meeting. This is right up there, we're buying a house. Okay. So thank y'all for being here and speaking about this, and I'm so glad that y'all could give us an update on that, and we look for y'all coming back and letting us know when it's all done, and. it's all done, and we'll share that with the community. All righty. Okay, one thing that we do every month at this time, the first meeting of the month, typically, we have our statistical data report that we like to share, and just cover these here briefly, but our intake at our animal shelter, it was a hundred and fifty dogs that came into our shelter and seven cats. They were able to work with rescues and other partners to get a hundred and fifteen of those dogs in good homes and twenty of the cats. Code enforcement compliance, they reviewed eight hundred ninety-five properties that were in compliance. They did write thirty-nine citations. Many of those would just be warning citations, and they were successful in getting twenty-seven cases closed out where properties got into compliance. And for the year, that got us up to a hundred and thirty-eight properties that came into compliance to help beautify our community, be good neighbors. Also, our fire department responded to a hundred and eighty-seven calls. It took three hundred and twenty-six apparatuses to respond to those calls. They were able to install fourteen smoke alarms. This is a pretty big number this month on the roadside trash pickup, nineteen thousand four hundred and eighty pounds of trash picked up by one crew off the side of the road through the month of September. That was coming off of August of eleven thousand sixty pounds. Things are back in full swing at Mountain Cove Farm with eighty-six overnight bookings or stays in the cabins, so that's getting back up as we're learning better how to manage COVID. There was an additional nine single-family homes constructed in the unincorporated part of our county. That got us up to a hundred and seventeen for the year. Joe was able to track fourteen media stories. We added eighty-four of you to our Facebook. Joe made seventy-one Facebook posts. That's pretty amazing. Got us to seven hundred posts for the year thus far. That helped drive forty-three thousand forty-one visits to our website. We had sixty new people join our e-newsletter, subscribed right off of our website. Unfortunately, we can, to some regards, we continued to patch potholes because we don't have all the roads paved yet, but we do track that every month, and we're continuing to pave roads, but we continue to patch the potholes to, we can get to those roads with our funding. And then we had twelve hundred ninety-three trips on our transit system. Any questions on our report tonight? Okay, one thing that's in your packet too, due to the holiday schedule, we do have a couple of modifications to our meeting schedule that we wanted to go ahead and give everybody a heads-up on. The first change is in November, where we typically have our meeting the second and fourth Thursday of the month. Well, that falls in conflict with Thanksgiving, so we're gonna move that to the nineteenth of November, and then also when we get to the end of December, we're conflicting into the Christmas celebrations, so we'll be moving our last meeting of the year to December twenty-ninth. So all meetings will still be held here at six o'clock in the Annex Three here at two oh one South Main Street in Lafayette. As always, the public's welcome, but we did wanna make everybody aware of that and start getting that information out. We're gonna officially adjourn our public meeting. Before we open up the floor for discussion, I do wanna make a couple of comments. There is a packet, I think it's about four pages there at the back desk, and we had about twenty-five copies. Hopefully, you were able to get one. That was a press release that come out today that gave more information from the Healthy Foundations Organization about their planned project that they're working on. There, in that press release, it does talk about and bring attention to a informational public session that they will be holding in a couple of weeks on October the twenty-first, and that will be held at the Walker County Civic Center. Their leadership team will be there to present more details about the project, and after they go through their presentation, they will be there to answer your questions and give responses back at that time of that meeting. So we invite the community to come and hear the full proposal. I know Channel Three, Channel Nine did a brief story, but it's really hard, is, for all that this project includes, for a minute, twenty, minute twenty-five seconds to cover everything, because they didn't mention that there's gonna be housing for three hundred veterans, there's gonna be a Kids City, there's gonna be an equestrian, there's gonna be a farmer's market, there's gonna be ample theater, there's a lot of other things that are going to be there, that's mentioned also in the press release, that was not covered in those minute, minute and a half news stories. So I know there's a lot of concern, there's a lot of question, and rightfully so, but I would just ask just one simple thing, before you make your final judgment, please hear what they have to say, come and get all of the information, and then make your decision. Make sure you've got the information and have time to have your questions answered, because this is, from all indications that we've been able to see, this is quite an amazing project. It's one of the kind, first in the nation, for all this to come under one campus. And some people say, well, you know, why first in the nation, why Walker County, these type of things? You know, I kinda paralleled this project to back in twenty sixteen, where I met with four business entrepreneurs one evening that talked about building a world-class hotel, conference, convention center, and world-class golf course on Lookout Mountain. Most people thought they had lost their mind, thought it was crazy. They ended up receiving an award by Golf Digest just a couple of, three weeks ago as the best eighteenth hole that's been developed since two thousand. And so they're getting worldwide recognition for the golf course, and they're working their plans to implement the hotel and the conference center. That started out at about a hundred and ten million dollar project, it's up over a hundred and fifty million dollars. The proposed budget that they're looking at on the complex for Healthy Foundations, from what they've shared with us, is about a hundred and six million dollars with about a ten million dollar a year operating budget. And so this is something quite spectacular that would bring a lot of prestige and notoriety to Walker County and would really, really benefit our veterans, our families, people that's dealing with hangups and problems and struggles and family issues to have a resource right here in their back door. There is an elected official in our community here in Walker County, and I hope at some point that he will step up and identify himself and share with the community that in twenty-twenty ended up going for help for PTSD, and he's never been in the military. He is a business leader, he's an elected official, has a wonderful family, has a great career, and due to great tragedy in his life within a short period of time, he ended up with a severe PTSD. I didn't know that was possible. I'd always in my mind, and just because of my lack of knowledge, I never knew that someone could have PTSD that wasn't in the military. But PTSD is about experiencing great trauma and tragedy and witnessing things in a short period of time. And so, his story is, he had to leave the state to find a facility and a campus that could help him, and he was able to do that, and he's now back functioning in full capacity and has a great positive outlook on life and has been able to unpack a lot of those things and become very productive again. But there was nowhere in this state that he could go. And so that's what this can do for our community, is help people restore their lives to be productive citizens, and so the county is not putting any funding into this at all. They've not asked for any. There's not been any ask or consideration for assistance, in-kind, tax abatements, nothing. They're doing all of this a hundred percent on their own investment. And so, we're just basically cheerleaders on the side, just very much like the mountain project with the golf course. We don't have any money in that either. We're just cheerleading the project because we know it's gonna create jobs, it's gonna bring value, and it's going to bring a real special opportunity for Walker County. So at this time, as we do always at the end of our meetings, if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak about any topic in Walker County, that we just ask that you keep your comments locally. We can't fix things in Washington, we can't fix things in Atlanta, but we wanted to give everyone an opportunity to come up. We do ask, we've had requests in the past, but we do ask that you limit your comments to about five minutes as respect of everyone else's time. And so if anyone would like to come up, we just ask you to come to the podium so we can get you on the camera, and the microphone will pick you up, and we just ask you that you state your name so everyone will know who you are. So is there anyone tonight that would like to come up and speak publicly? Yes, ma'am, come on up, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Hannah Thunderburke. My family and I are proud citizens of Lafayette and Walker County. I'm here today in regards to the all-inclusive park, also known as Bailey's Park, that I began in August of two thousand nineteen and was recently added to the SPOLOSH in June of two thousand twenty. This past spring, Commissioner Whitfield and I spoke about Bailey's Park and the SPOLOSH, and due to it being a government-funded project, we both felt the park would require a new name that would encompass this wonderful community. It was on these terms that Bailey's Park was successfully added to the twenty-twenty SPOLOSH. This week, I had the pleasure of speaking with the No Limits Adaptive Team League. No Limits is an inclusive sports team the county provides to the citizens, where children and individuals of all abilities have the opportunity to play sports and socialize together. The team alongside the Walker County community has been ecstatic about a completely accessible all-inclusive playground. Keisha Martin, Salitha Bankston, and Michelle Jones are administrators and leaders of the No Limits team. I've told them I would like the No Limits team to have an active role in renaming Bailey's Park. We are requesting that Walker County move forward with naming the all-inclusive park and project Heroes Park. We believe Heroes Park will fit into the community perfectly, considering it will be built alongside Highway twenty-seven, a designated Purple Heart Highway. This is a community that celebrates our veterans, our first responders, and our essential workers. As parents of children with disabilities, we witness our children face large battles that most grown adults will never have to deal with. They are truly our heroes. We believe every child and individual who visits Heroes Park will feel a sense of belonging, accomplishment, and pride. It is on this basis that the No Limits team and I request that Bailey's Park be renamed to Heroes Park. And that's what the Land and Water Conservation Fund is going to be funding. We're just asking that we name this project Heroes Park and that the park would be named Heroes Park. Thank you very much.
I wanna say a big public thank you to Hannah because she's the one that really initiated and got all this started about this all-inclusive park. It was not anything that I had ever slowed down long enough to think about, and you've done a tremendous job bringing attention to this and not giving up, and you've done a lot of research and homework and provided us a ton of information, and really have been a catalyst and was very active in making sure this project got onto the SPOLOSH list, and so she's just been a phenomenal citizen here in Walker County, and it just goes to show that one person can make a difference in their community, and so thank you, and we'll definitely take that in consideration and just make sure there's not any conflicts or any issues or anything like that. But I think that's a great name, and that really is exciting, so thank you for being here, and again, thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else tonight? All right, well, we thank all of y'all for coming out, and we'll be back here Thursday in two weeks, and be sure, and come be with us on the twenty-first at the Civic Center at five-thirty. We will have social distancing, hand sanitizer, masks. We do expect a pretty good turnout, so come early to get a good seat, and I look forward to seeing you on the twenty-first and back here on the twenty-second. So everyone, have a good evening, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.